Our community. This one tonight is a proclamation and we have the director of the Parks Recreation Proclamation, I thought we'd get here, we'll be kind of equidistant between everybody. This proclamation offices City of Pearland from the Office of the City of Pearland's Mayor. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Pearland. And whereas our parks and recreation are vital to the importance of establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental aspects and well-being of the community and the region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provides therapeutic recreational services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improves the mental and emotional health of our citizens. And whereas our parks and recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our communities and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreational outdoor activities. And whereas the City of Pearland recognizes the benefits that are derived from parks and recreation resources and the contribution they make to the quality of life of our community. Now therefore, I'm Tom Reed, but I'm Weston Mills, Mayor of the City of Pearland, Texas, and hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 as National Parks and Recreation Month in Pearland. And I ask all Pearland Parks employees, community organizations, and citizens to join with me in recognizing the quality of our Pearland parks and the contribution our parks have made to the appearance and quality of life for our citizens. And this is given under my hand and seal of office and signed as Tom Reed, the Mayor. And I'd like to present this to you. This is really to protect the place here, but I think it's distracting what I'm trying to do. But I want to thank you for your employees, and if you have some, you'd be more than standing up here.
Absolutely.
Come on up here, guys.
Mr. Medica, would you join us too?
Okay, look at all this. We'll just take a picture here. Go, scoot in here, and let's make sure we can get all these people. Chris, let me let you and I hold this, and I think we're going to take a picture from Chris, I'd like for you to make some kind of comment regarding the event today and what this really means to us, the National Parks and Recreational Month in Pearland.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor, for giving us an opportunity to share our passion with you and your council and our administration for the City of Pearland is already acutely aware. And I think a large part of why we're allowed and able to do what we do is phenomenal administration, including Mr. Pearson, Mr. Brandon Center, and Mr. Epperson allowing that support, and all of our elected officials supporting a better quality of life in the City of Pearland, and that work happens with the folks joining me, Mr. Brandon Torres, Athletics and Aquatics Manager, Ms. Pat Wiley, Volunteer Coordinator, myself as the leader of this motley crew, Ms. Monica Montoya, Recreation Superintendent, Mr. Daniel Gutierrez, working within our Senior Services, and of course, the Chairman of our Parks Recreation and Beautification Board, Mr. Ted Medica. So it's our goal every day to hear the needs, wants, and desires of Pearlanders and reach into our tool belt and find out how to bring those to the forefront of everything that we do. So Mayor, I appreciate you proclaiming this month for us, and we look forward to living up to it each year.
Wonderful. You know, when I talk about the people about Pearland and the fact that it's a growing community and it's getting to be quite a nice-looking city, I think about quality of life in Pearland, and immediately I think of parks. I think quality life and parks sort of join together, and they do make a big difference in our community. And we have more parks coming and also some other activities related to that. It's just that we toss money, and it takes time to do all these things, and we'll get it all done, just hang loose, because we're going to have a lot more things you'll be so very proud of in the future. Thank you, guys, for the work you do. I was out at the Pearland Independence Park on the Fourth of July. If you haven't been out there, you need to take a little stroll out there. It's not complete. It's only Phase One so far. There's going to be two other phases as we get the finances and blend those in. But it's a 50-acre park, so there's a lot of room to do some more nice things out there. If you haven't been there, go out and take a look at it. You'll be very proud of what these guys are doing. This looks nice, and our parks, when you go through them, they look great. They really do. They make you very proud that, wow, want to get out and go play a little bit. So, thank you very much, you guys. Thank you for doing it, and appreciate your being here tonight. And this is just, it's a very small token to division heads, probably, of our parks department, because there's a large number of them that have to take care of the large parks that we have. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)[364.41]
Person to speak on their behalf, we can give that person six minutes. It's up to y'all, or you can speak individually.
I can.
Is everyone in agreement that Mr. Bailey will speak for them?
I'll let.
Okay. Okay, state your name and address, please.
My name is Randy Bailey, and I live on 2217 Verona Drive in Pearland, Texas. And good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for giving me this time to speak. And we've lived in Pearland for seventeen years. And actually, when we moved in here, we moved into a gated community, which I thought, hey, it's gated community. Across the street, I have fifty-five and older, which we already passed that, but I have fifty-five and older. Down the street, little father, I have a retirement community, and little father down the street, then I actually have a, I say retirement community, they have an old folks' home, and then down the street, they have the funeral home. So honestly, I thought I had it made. You know, so the issue we have right now is, again, it's with our neighbor. And the problem is, is we have a commercial activity in a residential area, and we need this stopped. So he's actually running a business from his house, and that's in strict violation, that's in strict violation with the codes that we are dealing with. So right now, we're actually talking with about Bill's Magic Mow Up Bar. And you can Google that, you can see that on almost every site that's out there. And this address is 2217 Verona Drive. I'm sorry, 2219, that's where I live. 2219 Verona Drive. And it's a residence run as an event venue is what's going on. So he's having parties there, he's having props for music videos, he's having props for movie sets, like different movies that's there. One movie was called, I think, The Pizza Joint, and you can imagine the joint wasn't a place to go into, the joint was something else you would use. So he had modeling shoots going on there, and different things like that. So actually, if you look on the website, you can actually see what it costs to rent Bill's place. He actually has it posted up. Week before, it was three hundred and fifty dollars a night to rent it, or an event, and then now it's gone up to five fifty. And why is that? Because he's renting it. So we're there, all the neighbors there. So how many people here from Verona Drive to help Verona Drive? Who's here to show Verona Drive? So raise your hands, please, Eric. And again, you know, we've had it. I mean, it's there. So he's renting these props, he's doing this, and honestly, the problem have, you know, they were shooting a video, they come out and they knock on our door, which is next door, they tell my wife that, hey, you need to tell the yard boy to quit mowing the grass. So who's the yard boy? That's me. I'm mowing the grass. On Saturday afternoon, I'm mowing the grass. So they tell me quit mowing the grass because they're shooting a video. I'm like, hey, it's Saturday afternoon, why do I need to change my style and the way I'm living there? So same thing, twice they've done that to me. The other problem is these model shoots, and if you go on the website, you see this, it's pretty risque. And again, we have a five-year-old granddaughter that comes and stays with us, and when they're at the parties, the problem with the parties is they're playing the music in the backyard, and again, you know, whoever's coming, they select their own music. And so this music is very lewd music. I mean, I'm talking about very vulgar, a lot of curse words, a lot of words I would even repeat here. So it's there, so we went to ask them, look, can you please turn that down? Can you please change it? Because my granddaughter's here with us. And so they're ready to fight. They want to fight. They said, hey, you can't tell us what to do. We're ready, you know, they ask us, you want to fight? And this is the female, not the male, the female wants to fight. So we feel threatened, you know? We feel intimidated when we go outside. And again, like the weekends, we need to leave, really, to where we don't have these issues. So you can go and look at this website, he's got it posted up on the website, and honestly, on these sites too, he says right now on the site, and I think he's changed it just recently, and it says, at the moment, I'm only doing small parties during the day. And it says Pearland Police is extremely intolerant of any music after, outside at night, and parties must be wrapped up. Oh, they do. So it says at the moment. What does that mean? In a month from now, we'll be right back to where we were again. So this is what the problem we're having. And so he's telling everybody now, don't park in that area, don't park there, and basically, he's telling you guys to go park in Green Tea. So anybody in Green Tea here? So we're going to send them up to you guys. That's what's going to happen. So we're going to send them up to Green Tea, because we don't want them parking in front of our house, I'm sure you'll like it too. No. So you can look at the site where his website is posted up, and you can actually see the dates that are booked. So we got them booked all the way out to August, the middle of August, they're booked. So it's not a parties or whatever, it's events, and it's a business. He's running lucrative business out of his house. And if you look at the regulations, you can't do that. If I were to do that, why can't I run a garage out of my house? I can fix cars, we could do that. I mean, we build pipe supports. So why can't I bring a bunch of welders and do that? Because it's against the city code, and it's against ordinances. So here we go. And again, I mean, we've gone in there, we smelled illegal drugs, or we smelled it. My daughter won't even go in the backyard anymore when this is going on. She works for any of us, and the problem with that, if she gets drug tested, well, if that's going into her hair from the smell of the marijuana goes into her hair, then again, she'll get fired. It's not worth it. So now I have to change my lifestyle and everything because of that. All of us, all of us on the Verona Drive have to change our lifestyle. So again, they're disturbing the peace. I told you that they want to fight when we went in there and asked them. There are people taking photos of our house, when they leave the party, they litter all over the yard, they're doing, they're actually, I didn't even know what that meant. So they were gyrating out in the street in front of us, and again, we're like, my goodness, you know, we don't need to see that. And again, you know, somebody's out here gyrating in the middle of the road, and I'm like, good grief, you know? Maybe if I was forty years younger or something, but not now, you know? So, and again, the other thing we saw is when these people are leaving the parties, they're out there urinating on our bushes. So we see them doing that. I personally seen them do that, and I'm like, golly, you know, why do we need to put up with this? So again, what's actually happened too, right now, you know, and again, a bad thing what's happened, you know, the police officer that actually lost his life in the line of duty, he had the head-on collision a few years ago, or whatever. So where was this police officer going, or what he was doing? He was actually going to the call for this, these party venues is what he was doing. So he was on call going over there, actually had the head-on collision, and he actually died because of that. If we didn't have it, then that wouldn't have been the problem. So we've already had one thing. They ran over the neighbor's cat. They came in, they're speeding up and down the street, and they actually hit the neighbor's cat and ran over the cat. We confronted them with it. Or we didn't do it, well, no, we saw them do it. And then we're saying, goodness, you know, we don't need this. This has to stop. And so we feel threatened. As I said, we went outside, all of a sudden, you know, they're parking like triple-deep into the cul-de-sac. So if we have any emergency, that somebody has to come in with the ambulance, or somebody has to come in with somebody that gets hurt, or a heart attack, if I have a heart attack, which I may right now, I don't know, so if I have a heart attack, then the problem is, is we can't get the emergency vehicles in the cul-de-sac. So here comes the police, so we call the police, everybody calls the police, call the police every time, that's what happened, please come, right? Here they go.
Time's up, sir.
Time's up?
Yeah, I gave you an extra minute.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Help us is all we ask.
Next speaker is Bill Wiatrak, the owner of the home. Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Okay, so I'm Bill Wiatrak, the one that everybody wants to tar and feather. I want to apologize, I had no idea, a lot of this stuff, I love the Baileys dearly, and I had no idea that some of this stuff was going on that was going on. If somebody had just come up to me instead, I mean, I got the orange cone memo, hey, you know, and I was trying to fix it, I had some commitments, some people that I've already done through Airbnb, it's not a real bar for those who think I'm shooting porno movies, I'm not, I'm not, it's just a little, my little backyard bar, and things got a little out of hand, and the party's got a little bit too big, everybody wanted to come there, they said it was going to be ten people, and then fifty people show up, and they get drunk, and they pee on Randy's bush. I'm sorry, I apologize, I talked to Darren Coker, and he kind of told me a little bit about what was going on. Like I said, no one's ever told me, the only thing I got was orange cones and mean looks when I come out the door. And my girlfriend yelled at, yesterday, somebody tried to get into my house, they said they wanted a tour, I've gotten calls from people pretending like they're trying to book with me, and I've really been harassed, some really mean letters and things like that. But nothing from my neighbors on Verona. So you guys are justified. And so I've shut it down, I'm not doing that, I'm not going to, I haven't really had any parties for myself in years. I used to throw two huge ones a year that were crazy, and I don't do that, I'm traveling a lot now. But anyway, I want to apologize, I want to say that I think I've fixed it, I'm fixing what's not fixed, and I hope you forgive me, and let's all go out for pizza.
The next speaker is Jimmy Davis. As you're aware, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
All right, thank you. Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs Mill, Pearland, 77584. This could be really brief, I find it wonderful that July is the Parks and Recreation Month. I'm just here to say, and I know y'all probably don't hear it a lot, but great job on Independence Park. I understand it's in Phase One, yeah, you know, the sod, you can still see the squares, it's fairly fresh, it'll take a little time. Parks and Rec Department has done a great job on Independence Park, appreciate the good use of our tax dollars. The Fourth of July celebration, the grand reopening, whoever put together the way y'all marketed the Parks and Rec services, excellent job. Whoever got all the partners, and all the partners that worked with y'all, they did a great job. So as a, as a man who's lived here since February 2013, I've been to every Fourth of July celebration y'all have had, I enjoy the parks, I live by Centennial, go to it almost daily. Y'all are doing a great job, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, that completes all the speakers. Okay, what is your name? Did you fill out one of these forms? Okay, come on up to the podium. State your name and address, you have three minutes to speak, and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
My name is Marie Ferguson, my address is 11315 Enclave Lake Lane, I live in Shadow Creek Ranch. We have a situation similar with an Airbnb listing specifically for a party house, that backyard fence shares a fence with my backyard. We have several neighbors who have complained. I'm also on my HOA board, and in May, neighbors came to the HOA board, and the HOA authorized our management agent to send a violation notice to the homeowner, and we also had our attorney send a cease and desist order to the homeowner. The homeowner has sensed the Airbnb party house is, ad is still up, but it says no longer taking reservations. However, the neighbor is still holding to having the parties that were already booked in the Airbnb. The neighbors have had problems with their driveway accesses being blocked, we've had loud noise music going till 2:00 AM in the morning, there have been problems with people smoking prohibited substances in the front yards of the neighbors, as well as drinking alcoholic beverages in the streets of the neighbors. It has been a problem. I just found out today, there's also another one in Shadow Creek Ranch that I did not know about that's doing the same thing. The person next to me is renting their property for eight hundred dollars a pop. If she rents it two weekends, or two nights a weekend, or the whole year, she's making eighty-five thousand dollars off of that. This is a significant money, this is a business. It's not a problem, she leaves the home, she's not there when the parties are happening, there's no supervision whatsoever, which, does that sound familiar? So it's a problem. I went on Airbnb, and there are these party venues all over Houston and the surrounding area. It's a problem. It's something that's happening, and it's going to happen more, and I would request that the council please consider doing what they can to enforce and maybe strengthen ordinances for this type of business. No one's complaining about people putting their Airbnb for an overnight stay. The Texas Supreme Court has said that we can't shut that down, and that's not what we're complaining about. It's the parties and the disruptions, the hundred people coming in, the cars coming in, the posts going out over Instagram saying, come to this address.
Thirty seconds.
Party. And we don't know what it can escalate to. Who knows if somebody comes in and decides they not going to get in, and they decide to start sheeting up the neighborhood. It's definitely a problem. Please consider putting in stricter ordinances for that and enforcing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Have you filled out one of these forms? Please be sure to fill one out when you're finished.
I did, I already did.
Okay, go ahead, you have three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds.
I won't take that long. My name is James Howard, I live at 2301 Scarletty Drive, tub master for, or pack master for pack eight four eight. I've endured Bill and his party central for the last seven years. Now, I've tried to work with that gentleman over the years. Over the last year and a half, it's gotten worse, I've found needles, I've found drug paraphernalia, I've found beer, I've found bottles in my backyard where they throw them over. We share a common fence. I've seen the nude women, I've seen the nude ladies, I've seen the naked in the gyration, and I believe like the rest of us, we've had enough. All we're asking the city council to do is to do something. Just do something, because I got a thirteen-year-old that's a life scout, trying to be an Eagle Scout, and that's absolutely the wrong avenue for this to happen with. All I have.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay, those of you who haven't filled out one of these, please fill one out from the city secretary, the lovely lady at the end right here, before you leave the meeting. Come on up, state your name and address, I'll give you three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
My name's Terry Robertson, I'm at 2013, 2013 Anchor Bay Court, next door to the lady that Ms. Ferguson's talking about. And the biggest thing that's bothered me is people coming over borrowing things from me for this party, and it's all listed on her website, utensils inclusive. I have people that, if I'm out in the yard, they walk across the yard, there's no respect, there's no respect for parking, I can't get out of my driveway sometimes, I have to park my vehicles on the street just so I can get out. It's horrible. And you don't know how it is until you live next door to one of these and have to deal with these people. I've had run-ins with them, and I don't really want to get to that point, but you know, I have to do something. And I feel your pain, Ms. Ferguson and I have been talking, I let her know every time there's something going on, but it affects me and it bothers me very, very much. I don't really have much else to say, because everyone else has basically explained what's going on, but that's what's happening to me.
Thanks, sir. Come on up, sir. Come in. State your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
My name is Candy Ellenise, I'm at 2213 Verona Drive. I personally have spoken and texted with Bill about the situation. I was told several times that he would take care of it, he has not. I've told him that us, his neighbors, should not have to live like this, and he said that he would take care of it, and he's not. So I just want to speak a couple of facts of things that I've witnessed. I've been living here for five years, we moved into a gated community, happy for the safety that that would bring. It's not brought safety, it's not brought any of those things. It's brought a lot of fear, because there's been violence in the street, fights that have broken out in the cul-de-sac. I personally witnessed one of the neighbors three weeks ago being threatened by the partygoer that Randy was speaking about. They went over there and they asked for the vulgar music to be turned down, and three people followed her out of the backyard and told her, we're not doing what you say, we could own this house, and she said, we know you don't own this house. They cursed her. Two hours later, I'm doing yard work, and the same partygoer walks by my house and just randomly screams, does anyone want to fight me? Obviously, she was talking to me, because I was the only person outside. Another, just five minutes later, somebody went to go park down there, they were told not to park there, to park on Aaron Drive. The man who went to park there went in reverse, going about thirty miles an hour down the street, right in front of my house. My next-door neighbor said she's not allowing her son to play in the streets any longer, in fear that he's going to get ran over by these cars that are coming in and out of our gated community. Why do we have a gate code? Why do we have gate, why do we even have a gate if it's going to be given to thousands of strangers? We have spoken to Bill, many of us have spoken to Bill. I can look at a lot of these faces, and I can tell you in what way that they have been offended or harmed by these things that are happening. Bite broke out, there's glass in the streets, K-9 units showed up, I stood in the streets with several of these other people here, K-9 units showed up, went into the house, left, cars full of marijuana smoke sitting in front of the houses, one of the people left that night, they hit and run another car. I was out here with another neighbor, we witnessed it, the police witnessed it. So I mean, these are just a few things. This is like, like the gentleman said, over the last year and a half, it has gotten out of control. Every weekend, Thursday through Sunday, that house is rented. There are huge parties going on. You can go and you can Google Bill's Magic Mow Up Bar, you can see that Bill himself has posted about the numerous rap videos that have been filmed there, the numerous films that have been filmed there, the numerous lingerie photo shoots that are being done there. Fine, if you're going to do all those things, do them, be quiet about it, don't involve all the rest of us who are trying to have a regular life in our neighborhood. Like I said, I personally have pleaded to Bill, I have text messages, I have had conversations with him, I know several of these other people have as well, and we are pleading with you, help us. We've asked the HOA for help, we've asked the police for help, they both say they can only do so much. So I would appreciate it if you guys could help us out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir. State your name and address, limit your comments to thirty seconds, thirty, three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty.
I don't need thirty minutes.
Okay.
Dorsey Rushing, 2307 Scarletty Drive. I live in NSA Section Two. My house is about several eight houses from the house in question, and I've been there about five years. I don't go and confront anybody, I probably should have, but did not, but I do hear the noise and disturbance and have heard it repeatedly. And I'd also like to add my name and voice to the complaints, I hope you can do something about it.
Thank you, sir. Be sure to fill out one of these forms. Come on up, ma'am. Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Julie Dunn, I live at 2207 Fairway Circle. It's in Green Tea, it's on the complete opposite side of the golf course, until I heard about this on social media, I had never seen Bill's house, I had never even gone to that end of Verona. I'm here because I don't want this to happen next to me, and I'm sure nobody else does, and that's all I want to say. I hope you can do something.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Come on up, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
My name is Renee Braun, and I live at 2302 Aaron Drive in Green Tea. So I'm getting all the parked cars in front of my house, where we cannot back out or leave our premises. But I did want to state that he bull-faced lied, sitting right here, because I did email him through Airbnb and ask him why he was publicly putting on there to park on my street. And he declined my email, and he had to do that. And on that very day, I witnessed him at his party, which he says he's not there, I watched him in the front of the house with a house full of teenage children, kids having a party, and the police were there. So there should be a police report of that event, that he wasn't there. I saw him every party last, all four, I physically saw him with my own eyes in his front yard, so he was there. And number two, after I emailed him, he followed me home in his girlfriend's car, and he called out my name and wanted to know who I was. And I walked into my neighbor's house, and she heard it, and he asked, who are you? And she told him, I'm not Renee Braun. So he followed me home. So he can't sit here and tell you that he doesn't know and that he's never talked to any of us, because we have a paper trail, and we email him so that there is proof. So that's not true. We have complained in a manner that's not verbal maybe, because we can't prove it, but it's not true that he's not there, because he's always there, and he's in there with a bunch of teenage children, and he's a grown man. So that's my statement, it's, he's not telling the truth.
Thank you, ma'am. Please fill out one of these if you haven't. Anyone else? I appreciate y'all sharing that with us.
And I had a quick comment, Mayor, and we're not permitted to have a dialogue about this, of course, since it wasn't posted on the agenda, but I just wanted to request staff for a future item, if we could determine expedited process for shutting down businesses that are in a residential area. I know that Airbnb is something that's permissible, but yeah, it's something that's permissible, but of course, it's about event spaces, so I just wanted to determine what that is, and if that's something we could discuss at a coming meeting.
We can't converse at this point in the agenda, but staff will address that for you. Moving in our agenda, this is one of those cases where life does go on, and our agenda does have some needs. If you have agenda, item five, which is right after the comments were missed made, which is a public hearing, there was, is not a public hearing tonight, we have had in previous agendas, but not tonight. And item six is a consent agenda, which I'll ask Councilmember Hernandez to address, but we need items that need to be removed from the consent agenda. Do you have those? All right. We've been, we've been working on this quite a while, we give a chance to, I thought maybe a couple of councilors have some issues that they need to make a phone call, so I'm going to take about a five-minute recess at seven, seven o'clock. So, I'm going to take about a five-minute recess at seven, 7 o'clock.
Second.
Both in a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, item G is a recommendation for an award of a construction contract to Reliance. We've got a, a pretty aggressive program for our sanitary sewer lift stations to upgrade and rehab those, make sure those are all kept up to modern standards. Uh, this particular one's over on veterans. And as the packet outlines, it's part of a overall system in that corridor. Um, trying to get as much of the system into a gravity situation as possible, but we will continue to maintain a large number of lift stations to supplement that in, in locations like this. So, nothing further.
I complete your report.
Yes, sir.
Councilor, have any questions, right?
Uh, yes, mayor, a few questions with respect to the bid. So, um, I guess my general concern is there just seems to be a pretty, pretty severe imbalance in some of the items. Um, item 1.2, traffic control at $1,000, bypass pumping $1,000. Remove and replace fence at $8 a linear foot. Site grading at $500. I know the overall value of the contract is the lowest. I know why some of these items get bid this way, but I, I kind of want to maybe have an understanding as to where, where does this, where does this lie in disqualification? We've, we've talked before about disqualifying imbalance bids. Gives me a little bit of concern when I know that they're undervaluing things. Particularly if we need to do more of that work or less of that work, we're not going to get an even, an even split or an even return. So...
Mr. Upton, talk about the balancing and individual items there.
Councilman Perez, I can always understand everyone's concern when we start looking at what unbalancing is or what it takes a look at. But a couple of those items that you're talking about with regards to traffic control and bypass pumping, those are lump sum bids. Uh, so it's, they've decided to bid it at that value and, um, it's a lump sum. So, if it takes longer or they run into issues associated with that, it's still the same price. It's not a unit price item. Uh, with regards to the fence, um, I can understand with regards, but, uh, it's still a linear foot and there's a defined quantity. And they've decided to procure that at maybe a different contractor or they could do it in-house with their own forces where the others may have subbed. I don't know the answer to that, unable to answer that question of how they do in their means and methods.
Uh, I appreciate that. I mean, I think maybe, um, I think we may, we need to explore an idea of maybe a policy for the imbalance. It, it concerns me in that, um, I don't know if they made a mistake or they're doing something strategic. Uh, most of the time, the imbalance is, um, they, they undervalue one utility, overvalue the other one so they can get more, uh, get more from the front end of the project as opposed to the back end. And I suspect that that's probably what they're doing here. But it just generally concerns me when I think that we're hiring contractors that don't estimate the value of, of their work appropriately. And I think that that could lead, lead to problems. So, uh, I'm, uh, I'm okay awarding this contract, but I do think that in the future, we need to develop a policy or have a better understanding of when, when the imbalance becomes a disqualifier. Because, I mean, I, I know it happens on every project, but these seem pretty severe or at least on the cusp of being pretty severe. To take something that's engineered estimate at 10,000 and bid it for 10% of that value just seems severe. So, I appreciate your response. That's all I have, mayor.
Mayor, just real quick, um, and maybe Councilmember Perez definitely knows this, but in their way that there can be a cap on, on, I, I guess, our expenditures. In other words, um, they're presenting this contract and I know sometimes, you know, uh, companies will come back and say, "Hey, look, we've gone over this." And it ends up being that the cost of materials have gone up, but, you know, what they're bidding right now is $2 for one thing, one cent for another thing. Can we put a cap, you know, to make sure that we don't go far over this or too far over what they've presented?
You mean with respect to a change order?
Yeah, with, yeah, basically no change orders.
I mean, certainly do that. I, I would say, uh, not to take an answer away from council, but I mean, I, I'm not going to entertain any change orders on this. What I, what, what concerns me with the value to kind of address your question. When I've seen this on products that I bid, it means that there's a problem with the bid and we expect a change order to come back. Or, and if the change order doesn't get approved, then the contractor feels, "Well, I made a mistake. I admitted I made a mistake. I want the change order approved. I can't bid it for what I did." And they walk the job and let the bond kind of take care of it. So, I, I don't think it's as severe in this case. It's a fairly low value contract. Uh, and I think Reliance is probably reputable enough. But I do think that it makes me want to, discourages me from wanting to, uh, to, to do any change orders like, like Member Reed has said. So, um, I don't know if, I think staff still needs to answer your question, but that's my concern.
Any other further comments, council?
What, and just one second, mayor.
Sorry.
Is there, is there a way to do that?
Well, the, uh, I, I guess I'm not quite following. We do, the bid items are, are at the rates as recorded, right? So, I guess you're talking about if the quantities get busted and have to exceed quite a bit from that. We've got rules in place for, if there were any change orders for unidentified conditions or anything like that, but there's really nothing, I guess I'm, I'm sorry, I'm finding out.
I guess what I'm saying is you get a company that comes in and, and they underbid something that we know, you know, cost, you know, average and even below average is three bucks and they're bidding at .01 cents, right, or one cent. And so, you know, it's like, okay, well, is there a mistake here or, you know, and there's probably nobody in here to speak for the company? Is somebody here for this company?
I mean, the company's here, but...
Okay. Well, we can definitely ask him, but, but, you know, I, I guess the, the question is in, yes, in the future, when we're seeing stuff like this and we're seeing somebody trying to be the lowest bid and doing everything possible to be the lowest bid, but then, you know, pull the, pull the blanket from over our eyes, um, later on down the line and said, "I need a change order." I mean, that change order is, you know, 50 grand, uh, which would have put somebody else at a lower bid, would have had, you know, consistent quality throughout the, the duration of the project. Is there something that we have in place? It sounds like we don't. I mean, we have certain stipulations on exactly what it is that we are...
Yep. Well, I mean, we manage these contracts, so let Robert go.
Councilman Reed, um, the issue when you're, when you're talking about that is that they have a bid price that they've selected to bid at a value that they deem that they can make, make a fair and reasonable profit on at the end of the day. We have a contract language in place that, uh, forces them to meet that contract. If we're not changing anything and it is to cut and plug a sewer line and they give a value at that and we're not adding any to it and we're not changing any and the plans and specs cover that, then that's the value that they can bill for that project. It doesn't, they can't come back and say, "Well, I changed my mind. I want something different for it." That's the value that we've contracted and bid and they've accepted that bid, put their liability up, their insurance, and have fulfilled the contract obligations.
And to add on that, if, if the contract, if out in the field, if some unknown condition pops up or if we change the scope of work, we have to have a provision in the contract for a change order. To, to simply enter into contract and say, "No, you can't have change orders." That would sort of, in the end, that would be irresponsible on both parties to consider doing that. Uh, you have to have a provision for change orders in a contract.
Yeah. No, no, I, I understand. And that's, that's, that's fair. Obviously, you know, I, I definitely understand the contractual phase and, and not phase, but the contractual, um, demands on, on both parties, all parties involved. And I just looked a little bit closer and I see what they did. They kind of moved things around. And so, it's, it's one cent here, but it's really a much higher price for something else. So, at any rate, I, I just, you know, it, it's, it's somewhat deceptive when you look at stuff like this and it makes, you know, it could draw the attention of, you know, of us council members and, you know, we kind of bring it up and, you know, want to see why things are a certain way. But, um, but no, thank you.
Any further comments from council? I believe we have most in second on floor. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion pass, 6 to 0.
Okay. Moving in our agenda, Councilmember Hernandez, M, present that for our consideration.
Thank you, mayor. Consideration and possible action. Resolution number R 2019-167, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Have report.
Thank you, sir, mayor and council. We have an item that's been budgeted for replacing our natatorium, the deck surfacing, as described, the date specs to 2010. And it was the original installed, as we note in the second page there. And so, it's time to replace that, just part of our regular maintenance. Uh, we did go and bid it and weren't satisfied with how that came back. And so, we, uh, bid that again and we're recommending Hancock Pool Services. And we had, uh, they had bid in pricing, uh, as you see there, a little bit less. But, um, in the interest of getting the facility back up and running and available to patrons and, uh, you know, servicing, we were able to come to a price agreement and recommend the 180,000, 175,000, which gets it done in the 14 days. I believe it's 15 days as described there. That's all.
I complete your report.
Yes, sir.
Councilor, have any question or comment on that item?
Yes, mayor. Will, will this surfacing be, um, the same as what was down there? Well, I mean, will it last for approximately 10 years or longer?
Yeah, the original was, uh, 2010, so I don't know what the useful life is. May I ask Chris, can you help us out? May I ask Chris, can you help us out?
So the new cement is overlay. That's what Mr. Pearson alluded to earlier. It has a little bit of a different application process. Instead of a scour down to the original foundation, we're able to utilize some of the, I'll call it leftover resiliency of some of that sub base. So it actually will have a sub base on a sub base. So this one, we're expecting to have somewhere between about a 15 to 20 year useful life. Different type of material and it'll also have a surface that by design, it's a little less inclined to have cracks in the areas that would allow for molding, mildewing, that type of event to occur.
And will this cost be shared?
The interlocal that exists between the school district and the city would allow for this cost to be split at 50%.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further comment or question from council? Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Motion passed, four to two.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven, which is matters removed from the consent agenda, which we just addressed a couple of those. Item number eight is new business. Councilmember Moore, would you present item number one, your business item number one?
Member Moore, if you could give me one moment. This is an item which I personally counseled on prior to our council. For that reason, historically, when this item's come up, I've recused myself from discussion, though it doesn't require this, require it per the ethical ordinance. I think it's most fair to the citizens. So Mayor, if you'll give me a moment, I'm going to step out of the room since we'll have a quorum without me.
One, two, three, four, five.
Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-186, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a first reading for the PD plan here. As council's probably aware, recalls, we've got the Baker's Landing residential development that's successfully moving forward there off of State Highway 35, Main Street. As part of that, there was a requirement from the city that there be some commercial property. There's, Mr. Cole has gone through and assembled some of the property and they're able to bring this together so that there can be some additional commercial and try and incorporate that as part of this whole PD project and make it all work together. And so before you, before, you've seen it at JPH and for your consideration here tonight.
Council, have any question or comment on that item? I don't hear one. I guess we do have most second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
We have a complete council. Let's move on to item number two. Mayor, at the request of the owner, we want to table item number two until further notice from the owner. They asked that we do that, so I'll make a motion that we table item number 2000M-187, so moved.
Second.
Post-adjourned until further notice. Do we have a second on that? Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion from council on that? I believe we have a motion.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion tabled, six to zero.
Okay, so item number, and I'd move to three now. Okay, moving in our agenda to item number three. Things, things get a little, it's true, it's ins and outs and, but the, it's been an interesting afternoon with the rain and all that's going on. Councilmember Orlando, would you present this for our consideration, item number three?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R 2019-148, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We've got, as council's aware, a major public improvement project which will extend to McCord Road from Colon to Makawah. We're in the closing stages of getting all the right of way for that road project, but in advance of that, we have this separate water and sewer line project that'll get out in front of that. The memo describes the planning and the bidding. We had seven bidders for this substantial amount of work. Got very competitive pricing from the low recommended firm. The memo from Freeze Nichols and us describes the background and what we see is that and we're comfortable with that, that pricing and advantageous for the city. And so we're recommending night, moving forward with the Red Echo for the McCord Utility Water and Sewer Work tonight.
Council, have any question or comment on that item?
Got one question, Mayor.
Item number three?
Yeah, why is it we're not running the water line and the trunk line the same distance? Just curious.
The water main is a pressure main, so we can run that all the way over to Makawah Road tying with the system. The sanitary sewer's gravity line and we just run out of, we run out of depth and, and distance. So we get, we can make it as far as Garden and keep that as a deep trunk main up to that point, then to be able to start extending it south and looking into the areas of the unsuared areas that we have and still be able to gravity feed all those while, so we don't have to put in more force mains and sanit, and lift stations.
So we don't, we won't have any need for sewer hookups between Garden and Makawah?
We'll be looking, but there is some land that's already been developed that's being fed from the lines that are in the side streets. And then also one of the areas of land is associated with a drainage project.
So we'll add that later if necessary.
If I have a drainage project that's on a property that's left there, there will be no need for sewer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me give my paperwork straight back here. Back on 2019-148, item three. We got a motion second on the floor. Second, then, we have a motion on the floor, Madam Counsel.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
M, Councilmember, item number four, which Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019-160, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next three items are actually design awards. Voters in parallel and approved five different ballot questions, ballot, bond issued questions just in May. And as promised, we're, I want to get all of those moving in a good sequence and not let them sit long. These are three design projects, but mostly following up on the preliminary engineering work that's already been done. This particular one, West Lee, is for drainage work in that neighborhood, retrofitting some of the area there and going back in and improving the drainage, recommending that go with IDS and for your consideration here tonight.
Council, have any question or comment on this item? There you go. I believe we have most second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember, motion passed, five to zero.
Okay, moving in our agenda. Hernandez stepped out, I'll move that up to.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2019-159, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, voters approved a specific item, giving a bond project budget for a new animal services shelter to modernize and expand that to current needs and regulations. This contract follows up with quorum. They performed the preliminary concept work and this will award them the design contract. They would, as part of this, will be looking at two different sites, both of them land that the city already owns, so we won't have to go through that, evaluating that and working with us to develop the best solution. As the council sees on the agenda package, I believe it's page 34, there's a schedule for this. We are anticipating, again, using a construction manager at risk approach. It's been successful for us on one project already and another one's in the works with the library and we're, so the schedule would call for and give us the opportunity to have the designer go in and fine tune and develop some of the schematics and the plans, share that information probably around November back to all of us and we can evaluate that and get some, tune the estimates and schedules and so forth. And then next step after that would be to select a construction manager at risk that would work alongside us for the project's completion. But tonight gets the ball rolling with the quorum for the design.
Council, have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. So I know that there was a lot of concern in the community about the value of this project. I know that part of the value that we sought voter approval was for an allowance, I think two and a half million for us to be able to do land purchase. So automatically the, the necessity to spend the full three, 13.5 million roughly is down because we don't have to purchase land. I do agree with the move to go with, see them at risk so that we can, when we get to that stage of design, we can help to control pricing a little bit better than we would if we did the, the bid build. What I'd like to suggest is, since we're early in the design, since we kind of know what we want, this building seems like it's, this type of building is easy to kind of extract pieces off of it. If we could set, set some options, you know, here's, you know, here's a, if we capped it at 7 million, here's the, the amount of building we can get. If we cap it at 9 million, here's the amount of money we can get. If we spend the whole amount, here's the amount of money we can get. For this, again, for this type of building, that should be relatively easy for them to do without, without excessive amount of additional work. And that way, at least commitment to the citizens who didn't vote positively for this, for those who had concerns about the price, we will be able to be, to set the value that we want to set. If we end up saying, okay, well, to get everything we want, we have to spend $10 million. We have the ability to make that decision along with, we don't want to spend more than seven and a half million, which is roughly what League City is spending on theirs. And we can make a, an educated determination about what, what we may be sacrificing the building. That way it doesn't, may not feel so knee jerk if we just cap it. I think that may be the best approach that we're hopefully addressing all the concerns people who know we need a new facility and voted positively for that, the people who think that we're, we need to control the expenditures on this and not spend the full value.
If I could, I'll point, council, the memo, one of these that we shared to you previously on page five, early on there, that just shows sort of the schematic. And a lot of the area, as we tried to explain before, is fixed. If you're going to do it, you need to have the adoption areas, the support staff areas, the veterinary areas, basically everything that's left of the corridor on that particular drawing. So there's frankly not, if you're going to do a facility, you know, that's, that's fairly, you know, locked in. The area that's more flexible would be the number of, of animal bays and shelters. I mean, that's something that we can provide the options and the scales, but, you know, I hear what you're saying, but also, you know, people voted, we, we said we are going to build a facility of X, you know, to meet the needs of today and tomorrow as best we can. And that's what was put forward and like we do in all our projects, whether it be a fire station or a burn building or what have you, we'll, you know, share and manage the project and, you know, be within budget and then some as best possible. But that's what, we'll, we'll come back to you once we get into, as I said, those concepts with as much flexibility and some choices as possible, but also by same token, don't want to lead everybody astray that, you know, that what was promised can be done for, you know, two thirds of the price that was talked about in the budget.
I appreciate your, your comments, Clay, and I don't want to oversimplify it. I also don't want to be argumentative. You know, I, as I look at the floor plan, I, I see things that could be optional. I see things that could be extractable. I do see things that could be phased. I, I don't want to micromanage the design. That's not my role. I'd like us to try and have our consultants work with us for that priority. Again, I'm, I'm 107, so if the rest of council does not agree with that approach, then, then so be it. But I, I think, again, there was a lot of concern in, in the community about the value of this. I think it would be disingenuous to me as council to ignore those concerns, even though the referendum passed, to ignore the concerns of those who were concerned about the value.
Sure, and I'm not trying to be, I'm just, you know, sharing the other side of the coin and like I said, we'll give you choices. I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember there's money for land in the CIP in the budget that was prepped for, is that true?
City Manager Pearson, no, there, there was no money set aside for land. It'd always been the intent to utilize land that the city owned. What we have in there is contingency and then also depending on when the project is let, associated inflation and market value costs were there. The sooner we can get the project going and bring a contractor on board to help us value cost ideas and design, the sooner we can get out with a more reasonable cost that can meet within the budget and/or beat the budget is our goal, while still maintaining the needs to meet the regulations and rules that the animal shelter and the officers have to meet to maintain certification.
I, I, I thought, if I remembered correctly, it was two and a half million dollars as a contingency for land purchase, but I guess I'm misremembering that.
No, sir. It was always set up to be, there was contingency in there and then also associated with any additional engineering fees. We've gotten our fees from our architect are actually less than what they had budgeted and told us to budget for. So we've been really working with them and we're real appreciative of that.
Because the design was actually originally a million, is that right?
That is correct. It was a little over 900,000, almost a million dollars, that is correct. And they've come in complete package with what you've been presented tonight.
Member Perez stole a little bit of my thunder, but he explained it probably a whole lot better than I would have. I, I, you know, one of our, one of our main jobs up here is to be the, the keepers of the taxpayer dollars. Yes, this did pass in the bond. Yes, it is needed, but I, I just want to make sure that we're doing this to the best value to the taxpayers that we can.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Councilman Perez and Moore said. We got the green light for almost $13 million, but I read a recent article today on what the American Kennel Association recommends on the cost for kennels and on the high end it was $450 a square foot and we're 651. And as Councilman Moore said, we are stewards of the taxpayer. And as Councilman Moore said, we are stewards of the taxpayer dollars. It was just, seems a little high at six hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
So, at what point along the way in this design phase, I guess, are, or how many touch points are we going to have? I mean, is, if options are coming to us, are we able to scrutinize those options along the way? Is it just going to be, here's your design? Or will the, where the, how many options will we get, in other words?
I don't know if you stepped on, sorry, but the first point will be after we get that schematic in probably November, and that'll give us, you know, the, some of the choices and zero in on the site, and that'd be the best point to share that information and be able to go from there. And then we'll also bring the construction manager at risk about that same time. So, you'll see them and come together, and we'll be able to adjust or shrink or add or whatever the call is.
Okay. Because I guess that was, my understanding is that we go along the design process, we'll have some input to control features, materials, however specific we want to get. Is that...
Just like all the buildings we do, and we're off to a good start with ten percent under what we thought for the design already.
Okay.
More than.
All right. Well, thank you for doing that, at least in the start.
Any other comment back, Council? Madam Secretary, I believe we have most second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed four to two.
It's four to two.
Just real quick, Mayor. I mean, one of the best words that, you know, Councilmember Little mentioned was stewards of the taxpayers' money. That's all I want to say.
Item number five served. Moving to item number six. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R two thousand nineteen dash one sixty-five, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the third of the items getting going on the two thousand nineteen approved bond issues is for Pearland Parkway improvements, looking ahead towards not only today's needs, but also a future when the McCard Road project marries up with this area and volumes increase even more. You've seen the schematic, and that function of that road can be improved for carrying volume and more safely with some improvements. And so, this design contract is to get that going at Pearland Parkway and McCard Road. Recommendations going with Alliance Transportation Group.
Council, any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Just one, just one comment. And I discussed this with the consultant earlier, just for the matter of public record. This couples with what we voted in the consent agenda item with Pearland Parkway. I know you're designing both the signal at Forest Park and Pearland Parkway along with the traffic circle. Again, what we discussed before, I'm concerned about the timing if we install the signal at Forest Park in advance of the traffic signal being, traffic circle being installed, particularly when we get into construction. I think it'll be a relatively quick construction process, but it'll still probably be the better part of a year. You know, if we have, if we have that signal red on southbound at peak hour, and we've got lanes closed for construction, we may end up shutting down that whole intersection. So, I certainly need to move forward to the design of both. We need to make sure that we get the cost for both, but I think that once we get the cost and we can shelve the installation of the signal, or at least, maybe if we install it and then postpone actually putting up the lights and not actually having a signal intersection or funk of a signal intersection until the circle is done, I think that may be the safest route. So, again, we had that conversation. I know you, Mark, you've already said you promised to look into it. I think it's just important to put that on the public record. And also, Mark, if I could borrow you for a second. I've known you for years. I don't want to show a lot of your experience. I think you're, you know, I have a high opinion of your acumen as a traffic engineer, but one of the reasons we're redoing this is because the traffic circle was designed poorly the first time. So, can you help us to inform us, like, what kind of expertise are we bringing into the redesign of this?
Just going to update it to FHWA standards so that it'll operate in a more safe manner. As it is right now, there's nothing wrong with it. It's called a rotary. The problem is, is that people drive much faster in a rotary, and the yielding occurs in a different manner. When volumes reach a certain level, rotaries don't work so well anymore. So, where we are with this is that we're at that point. In fact, we've passed that point, and that's the whole impetus of this improvement.
One of the concerns is the banking. This was sloped to allow for drainage on the outside of the lane, but it fights centripetal force, and so it causes your car to want to move with the slope of the lane. I think that's, if anybody's resigned to traffic circle, knows that you bank inside. So, I mean, just, again, for the purpose of public comment, let's make sure it slopes the right direction.
You've, you're, the design is in good hands.
Thank you very much, Mark. People are sick of hearing me talk. I'll stop.
So, don't go anywhere, please. I have a question for you. So, one of my, one of my issues with this is, is that the traffic at the Beltway and Pearland Parkway. So, if we're going to take traffic all the way from five eighteen, all the way down Pearland Parkway, we're going to slingshot them past this rotary, which will allow them to go at a greater rate of speed, and not only at a greater rate of speed, but get to the tollway much faster. Are we not just going to create a traffic congestion at the tollway and Pearland Parkway, which is already way over congested right now as it is?
The roundabout will actually help us meter the flow a little bit. It will slow the traffic down a little bit beyond what we're seeing right now with the rotary. So, from that perspective, you'll see a little bit of a metered effect, not much. There is an issue at Sam Houston Tollway in Bow Aid, I get it, but from the standpoint of over saturating that intersection anymore, I don't think that's going to be an issue. Thank you.
I'm looking at your green overlay on the existing roundabout, and, you know, other than slowing the traffic down a little bit when it gets to the roundabout, I was against this thing from the beginning. I just don't see where it's going to be that much useful. I don't see completing McCard is going to generate that much more traffic. I think those people will go to thirty-five to get to the Beltway, and your congestion occurs down closer to five eighteen and at the Beltway. I just never saw the utility in this. I use this on a regular basis and during rush hours, and it's just no congestion, and traffic moves pretty freely through there. Like I said, your congestion's at the other end, so.
That's kind of my two cents worth.
Well, I think we're putting a stoplight in there, put it close to that location, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
So, that will help the traffic stop and think about before they floorboard it through. And I think, I try to avoid that intersection myself because it is rather, I don't feel comfortable with the cars coming in. I'm not quite sure whether they're going to be in the same lane or not. I mean, at the same time. So, it's, I think it needs to be addressed. I think this is a good way to address the design of, for cars. We could, there could probably be some slowing motions built in somewhere in there if it's a problem.
That's the inherent nature of that design, is it will slow. It's a safety improvement.
When you come up there, if you're still floorboarding it, I think you've kind of done them anyway.
Correct.
But most of us call it a slowdown when we've got the intersections like that. Any further comment from Council? There you go. Good. I believe we have most second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Motion passed five to one.
Almost voted no.
Doctor, no. Okay, well, that tucked away. Let's move with item number seven, which, Councilmember Orlando, would you put this on the table for our consideration?
Sure. That's consideration and possible action on resolution number R two thousand nineteen dash one five two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city of Pearland's had a longstanding cooperation with Pearland Independent School District, whereby we place officers that are designated into the public schools within PISD, which is a large, but not all, portion within the city of Pearland. This agreement is a somewhat new in that it's a multi-year agreement. So, that gives a better planning and certainty for budgets and staffing for us and for the school district. It also increases the share that the school district is paying for our officers. It's not one hundred percent, but we believe it is a very fair and reasonable amount based upon the mutual benefit and the protection that's provided and the high quality of service that we provide. I want to compliment our police staff, particularly Assistant Chief Randall. Worked very hard and long on this with the school district to bring this recommendation to you tonight, and so we encourage and ask for your approval for this this evening.
Council, have any question to comment regarding this?
I did have a comment, Mayor. With the Pearland Police being in the schools, I think this is always a great thing. I've been thinking about this. Actually, I saw this on the agenda item. I think it was important to keep this going as long as we can. I know that there's always a lot of tension, it seems, in the world between police officers and communities, things like that. I think Pearland Police has done a fantastic job of being out in the community and being very supportive, and this is just another opportunity for us to stay visible, stay in the schools, build relationships with the police department and the community. So, I very much like the fact that we do this with Pearland DSD, and I'm a hundred percent for this going for as long as we can keep it.
I think most of the, us realize when you're working with the younger generation, sometimes they have, don't really view what the real life is about, and it can be a challenge to work, make sure that the relationship is good, and I think an authoritative voice is very welcoming sometimes in a position like that. Council, any question to comment on this at this point?
Just a quick, maybe just for my indication. Do we have any, have we had any conversations or had, have the conversations included any kind of structure of what we're going to do after this three-year term? Are we just going to...
The plan would be to start early and look at renewal. I mean, it's, as long as it's continually beneficial for both parties, and I see absolutely no reason that it wouldn't be, so.
Any further comments from Council? Madam Secretary, I believe we have most second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda. Item nine. We're moving into the executive session portion of our agenda. Let me open the execution under section five five one point zero seven four for personnel matters regarding executive appointments to the boards and commissions, and also executive sessions, five five one point zero seven one, consultation with the city attorney regarding pending and potential litigation. Obviously, in executive session, we can discuss this with individuals that we have in there, but we cannot make a decision in executive session. But upon return to open session, the council can address both of these items, items one and items two. So, at this time, we will recess into executive session at, my clock says, fade up eight o'clock. So at this time, we will recess into executive session at, my clock says, fade up eight o'clock.
Council has returned from executive session at 9:02, moving in our agenda to, let me flip the page here, to new business section. Item, new business item number eight, consideration of possible action. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action regarding appointments to the boards and commission. No move?
I guess.
I don't think there was no action. We're not going to take any action.
There is no action.
Not going to take any action.
Okay. The council will take no action on that item.